Okay, good. Okay, well, please. This motion has time reaching technical difficulties. Okay, hold on. Good.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Today is August 22, 2025. We are here for the Guam Community College Board of Trustees' Monthly Meeting. The time is now 12:20, delayed as a result of technical difficulties. Can I please get roll call?
Yes. Carl Leonard.
Here.
Bruce Green. Gina Ronas.
Here.
Yolanda B. Drummond.
Here.
Frank Emery.
Here.
Richard Simon. Melissa.
Here.
Preston Nala.
Here.
Attorney Rollin Antoinette.
Present.
Present.
Thank you. Can we please recite the mission statement? Guam Community College is a leader in career and technical workforce development. We're providing the highest quality student-centered education and job training for migrants. Can I get a motion to review the minutes of previous meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll give you a few minutes before we...
I didn't have no communication.
Thank you. Rapid discussion?
I knew you asked for a rapid discussion.
Okay. Moving on to the president's report.
So, starting off with the financial status of the college. The Trumpy Journal Fund, 3018, $12,202,2, approximately $12,302,000. 5.7 from MDF, 183,700 from the Capital Development Fund, 117,000 from the Journal Fund for the Wunchi Peace Step Scholarship Program, and 275 for Post, for a total of $18,613,696. And that is at 88% of the budget as requested. Thank you. Okay, and then, let's see. So I didn't have a report for June or July primarily because most of June and into July was out or vacation, but there are several things that I just want to highlight as part of events that occurred during those months. So we did participate in the Summit on Government Procurement. So we did participate in that panel. There are some results from that panel. And we have submitted a request for some funding to further expand our procurement training for the college, actually for the government of Guam as a whole. So we're hoping to receive that funding so that we can expand the procurement classes that we currently have. In addition to that, we have been meeting with some representatives from the charter schools on partnerships, either in participating in some grant opportunities for them and also articulation. So there is some interest in building some pathways from, for example, the ninth- to twelfth-grade charter school into the secondary. So we are working on and having some discussions on that as well. We did complete the governor's summer youth employment program over the summer. And so we had, as part of our program, we always have a resume writing, which is a significant component for these students, resume writing and service learning presentations. And so that's part of how we develop our program for all those that work here on campus. We did have, the summer CTE had 102 participants, and they had an expo and they highlighted their work in the criminal justice program that we had, job shadowing for culinary arts. And we had several ninth graders, so graduated eighth graders that came here as incoming ninth graders that finished the program here summer. And so these are college courses that are offered. And we also offered as part of our program the Food Service Management Certification. So some of these students are already on their way to developing those micro credentials that we talked about during the summit. The HYPE Summer Work Experience Program did have 91 completers. And so this is a pre-collegiate program that we also operate here on campus. And then the Literacy Navigators that were originally funded through our higher education funding during COVID. We have localized that program to the extent that we can here on campus. And so these navigators have now been working with the Guam Public Libraries and the DYA Resource Centers. And they're also providing some services now to school-like children that are in the hospitals. So that's been an outreach that they've started as part of the Literacy Navigator and then also working to provide some services to skilled nursing facilities. So just to expand their reach in terms of literacy. And then, of course, we had the Open Campus and the Blahm Party that was attended here on campus. We had some interest from the community. The Christmas and July bazaar was actually really good. We got a lot of good vendors that came, and I think they did really well. So that was pretty well attended. But it was an opportunity for us to showcase the campus. Some folks that were here had never been to the campus. And so that was a good invitation for them to come. We did have a mini career fair that was hosted by our Tourism and Hospitality Program. And so we had opportunities for students to look for jobs as well. And then, we did, and we'll probably start adding this to the agenda under construction, but several of the administrators did attend the 30% completion of the A&E Design for Building 600. So that now will be presented also to the faculty, now that the faculty are back, so they can see what the anticipated footprint will be for Building 600. And then, of course, we completed most of the inspections for public health. There are a few things that we still need to work on. And so the facility and maintenance folks are continuing to work on those little pieces that we still have, primarily because a lot of the equipment supplies have just come in. So we're still working through that process with public health. And that's all I have. I'll talk about construction projects in further detail if we run a few.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to the monthly activity reports. Justice P. Galasko.
Yes. So first of all, the GCC Student Orientation was held on August 11, 2025 at the Multi-Purpose Auditorium, Building 300. The student orientation is designed to welcome new students to the campus. It introduced them to the services and resources offered. We also provided a campus tour showing various buildings and classes offered. Our goal was to help students feel comfortable in their new environment and prepare them for a successful academic year and social experiences. And then August 13 and 14, myself and the COSSA officers welcome new and continuing students to the fall semester on campus. Lastly, upcoming September 5, 2025, the Student Organization Introduction Ceremony will be held on, oh, as it was, will be held at the Multi-Purpose Auditorium, Building 300, to include training on student organizations, forms, and processes, followed by the first COSSA General Membership Meeting for the upcoming activities for all of this. And that's all I have for it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on before, we'd like to welcome and introduce Ms. Francine Gallo as the newly appointed faculty advisory member to the board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Reaching out to faculty, this school year started out without any issues. We're all excited to be back, and there hasn't been any major change. They all said that the schedule, the semester's running smooth with all the schedule, the adjustments in their schedule, especially for secondary.
Sure.
And we're looking forward to the Labor Day picnic, coordinated or hosted by the Faculty Senate. And if there's anything else, you know, this is my first board meeting, so if there's any adjustments I need to make, please feel free to let me know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on.
So, yeah, so the fall semester started, and staff are busy assisting students in registering for classes with many adjustments to their schedule. And for these students coming in, we're helping them, assisting them with the login, the login procedures and how to get them into the system so that they can go get their classes or check their emails and that. So pretty much that's all for my committee.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. Board of Trustees, anything to report?
We just completed the SHIP conference. Dr. Akada was on the panel for workforce development. So thank you, Dr. Akada. It was really well received, the conference in totality. We hit the highest attendees ever at 400, so it was really amazing. We had a host of different talent coming from the state side to talk about leadership and things of that nature. So it was really well attended. In addition to that, I think we, I attended the Blahm Party in Open Campus. That looked like a success. I think if the weather were nicer, it probably would have been successful. The convocation I also attended, maybe I'll say there.
And so I know several of the board members were in attendance, whether it was in person or online, for the convocation for the new school year.
Thank you.
So thank you guys for it.
Yeah, I did the procurement, the Guam procurement, and then I also attended the SAMU conference. I'll get you the details on that.
Anything else to report? Okay, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business.
So starting off with the construction projects, the Wellness Center. So we met with representatives from USDA. The digital director was here, so we had a chance to include him again. And the issue with the Wellness Center is its current location, where we want to put it, are the butterflies and the snails. And so part of the requirement from US Fish and Wildlife is that we hire a biologist, and we have a whole plan put together to relocate the butterflies and the snails, and that we provide fencing, and that we forever take care of the butterflies and snails. So I got real close to saying we don't want to do this project anymore because it's in the footprint of where we want to build the building. So Dr. Julie and I looked at the representatives from USDA, and I said, "What if we moved it someplace else?" So I met with the architect last Saturday and gave him an idea of, "Perhaps we can take the Wellness Center and put it on the parking lot where the tech center is, and then you work around the butterflies and the snails for additional parking." So he's going to take a look at that now. That'll salvage the project. Otherwise, it's going to be very costly and complicated for us to do that whole litigation because it's, we're installing on this project for a long time. The parking lot adjacent to the tech center right now is already disturbed because it is a parking lot, so the land has been disturbed. So if we can reposition the building onto that segment there, that might be our opportunity to move it forward. So he's taking a look at it now, and we should receive an update from him fairly shortly. So hoping we're able to salvage that. In terms of Building B, so Building B at the front of the campus is now at 98.8% complete. The only thing we are pending is now the shipyard clearance. And the shipyard clearance is required so that we can dig on the road to connect the water.
That's amazing.
And so I did reach out yesterday. I'm hoping to get that document sometime today, so we're hoping on that. And then the other, the final piece of it would be the clearance from EPA and CAHA. So that's where we are in Building B.
Occupancy mean?
Yes, so that we can get occupancy. And so the building is done. We've staged all the equipment in there. And then once we get the occupancy, contractor will come and put the equipment together.
Good job.
Workforce Development Center is currently at 91.5% complete. And so that project is continuing. They should get their main switchboard, or they should have received it last week. So they're still working on some, you know, touch-ups in terms of the electrical and lighting system. So that's WDC. Culinary, we just met with Culinary this morning. So Culinary and baking is currently at 96.64%. And they've got some additional work that they need to do for testing and balancing of the ACs and addressing the issue with the fiber alarm system, in addition to some potential ductwork. But we're hoping to get conditional occupancy, and that permit again is pending, EPA, CAHA, and Public Health and Social Services. That's Culinary. Building 2000, generator's been hanging at 99% for a long time. But the master electrician was just reviewing now the final as-built drawings on August 19. And then they're going to be doing the Level 3 testing sometime after August 22 because we want to make sure that the registration and the adjustments to the schedules is not interrupted because we have to take the building offline. So that's Building 2000. And then park, solar parking lot and Building D. So the recommendation for environmental consideration was signed already and submitted on August 18. And so US ACE, Army Corps of Engineers, did review that. And so the next step was for us to get the authorization to proceed from DOI. So Dr. Julie just sent me note that that has already been received. So we'll start that project shortly. So that's Building B. I'm sorry, that's still parking. And as you can see, the campus white painting project is now complete as of August 20. And it's taken off of here, and all final payments are being processed now for the contract.
The campus looks...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving on to new business.
Hey, Carl, can I just interrupt? I also attended a meeting with Jennifer Ward last, was it last week or before?
Friday.
Right. She had a...
For the group.
Yeah, yeah. She also did, right? You were there also, right? No?
Friday, yes, that's right.
Jennifer, no?
Jennifer, yes.
Yes, yes, I'm with you.
Yeah, I'm bummed I wasn't able to meet up with her. Moving on to new business.
So what we have here is a request for above-step recruitment from one of our nurse faculty. We have documented evidence of continued job announcements, active job announcements for recruitment for nurse faculty. This particular individual had left GCC to take another job. And so when we put out the job announcement, of course, with the board's approval for the above-step recruitment, the applicant was interested in coming back and then requested if we could seek the board's approval because we can offer up to step seven as approved in the most recent policy. And so there is a request for us to present to the board a request and based on the recommendation from our Chief Human Resource Officer, is to request for the above step at step nine. And the request is based on difficulty in recruitment. So there's different options for above-step recruitment, one being difficulty in recruitment. There are other options for like exceptional qualifications and stuff. And so for this particular request, it's based on difficulty in recruitment. And we have a list over the past several years of how many times we went out to request for nurse faculty, and we continue to have that listed continuously all the time because we're always going to need additional faculty for nurses.
Is this just salary or this includes or back benefits? Is this just salary?
This will just be the salary because the benefits are all based on base salary. So it's adjusting the base salary to this above-step recruitment step.
If no one has any questions, can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then, please, so the next one is a request for travel. So there are several meetings in Washington DC that I'm asking the board chair to attend with myself, primarily because of the opportunities that exist now with the different funding sources that are available. And so I think this is a good time now that things have settled down just a little bit to pay a visit to Washington DC in terms of the federal funding that we receive and also some potential partnerships going forward. And so I'm arranging all those meetings now to occur October 23 and 24. And Sherman will be attending.
That's nice.
Any specific federal needs here?
So there's Department of Ed, Department of Labor. Yeah, and then there's a, there's some other nonprofit organizations that I, for workforce development initiatives that I'm also trying to schedule.
Well, Jen mentioned during her presentation to the staff that they're actually shifting a lot of the monies from the agencies may have been delayed. So she said she's also looking for funds on the, like what Dr. Akada was saying. So there's an opportunity outside of our traditional funding sources, right? So it's good. I'm all for this. Here, please.
And then the second one is, as a member of the Guam Education Board, the NANSP conference is happening in Austin, Texas. And so I'll just connect the two together and take the lead, well, take the lead on the weekend.
Motion to approve the president's travel schedule?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Travel schedule approved. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to approve it in exactly session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Can I get a motion to move out of executive session back into regular session please?
I will. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to accept the President's report please?
Motion? Accepted.
All in favor?
Aye.
President's report accepted. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you everybody.